All right, it is five o'clock and I'd like to call the five o'clock works executive work session to order. Uh, first item on the agenda is an executive session. We have personal matter, discussion of matter related to the employment and compensation of employees within the assessment's office and parks and recreation department pursuant to South Carolina Code of Law section thirty dash seven dash seventy A one. And uh, part B contractual matter discussion of matter related to the provision of health care services in Newberry County, pursuant to South Carolina Code of Law section thirty dash four dash seventy A two. Do I have a motion that we go into executive session? Motion by Vice Chairman, second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. We will go into executive session and we will make it as brief as possible.
Went into executive session for the aforementioned reasons, no action was taken. Do I have a motion that we come out of executive session?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor? All right, we are out of executive session. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
So move.
Second by Vice Chairman Sees, any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned from the five o'clock meeting. I would now like to call to order the six o'clock county council meeting with the invocation and pleasure of allegiance by the Honorable Leon Fulmer.
Thank you, fairman. Let us pray. For we come to you tonight as your humble servants. We thank you for the many gifts you've given to us. We thank you for this wonderful county. We thank you for these council members that dedicate their time to the service of the county. We thank you for the citizens of the county that have elected us and put their faith and their trust in us. Thank you for the employees that we have within the county. Most of all, we thank the volunteers, volunteer, their time, their efforts to serve their fellow citizens of Newberry County. For these and whatever else you see that we may need, we humbly ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the book of laws, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. We'll take both of these as one. No one has a problem with that, I guess. Newberry County Council Work Session, May 21st, 2025, and Newberry County Council Meeting, May 21st, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fulmer, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Second is the, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept?
Yes.
Motion by Vice Chair, second. Second by Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, the third is our favorite time, is special recognitions by Newberry County Fire and Rescue. We're going to turn it over to Mr. Tommy Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm here tonight to recognize a couple of our fire departments and one of our rescue squads. Mr. Councilman Smith and I have been working on a plan to do this at some of the council meetings each month. So tonight, we were going to start last month, so I'm bringing in Station Five tonight since we didn't get to have them last month. Station Five Consolidated, Station Six, Little Mountain, and Little Mountain Rescue Squad, Station Eighteen. And I'm going to just read a brief summary from each station and kind of give you all a little background on their station, if you don't mind. Consolidated Fire Department has two stations, the main station on Highway 34 and a substation in Maybentown. They have 29 members with service range from two months to 64 years. When the years of service add up, this equals to about 743 years of service within their department. The average year of service is about 25, little over 25 years. Seventeen of the members are interior firefighters. There are two members that have qualifications firefighter one and three that have, meet the qualification for firefighter two. Four of the members are also of the, are members of the primary rescue squad. They have monthly business meetings and monthly training meetings and do annual burn training and at the training grounds and annual hose testing. Consolidated was one of the first departments in the county to make and sell address number signs for residents. They participate in the career day at Primary Gominy School. They go to leave of farms in the fall with a fire truck and provide fire educational material at that event. They also provide and install fire alarms throughout the community when requested by the members of the community. The department has an annual fried steak supper as a fundraiser each year. In 2024, the department ran 76 calls, and I'm not going to go through the breakdown of that. They provide mutual aid also to Fairfield, Union Counties, and they respond along with Primary Friendly, Whitmire, and St. Phillips Fire Departments, and also with Primary Whitmire and Newberry Rescue Squads. Over the past years, they have applied for and received V-Safe grants through the state totaling over $70,000. They've also applied for grants with South Carolina Forestry for the last 10 years. They've received eight of those grants for a total of over $81,000. That's a 50-50 grant. And the Forester Commission matches that with $5,000, and the department pays the difference, but the county has been matching those grants. So in total, they've received over $81,000 through the forestry grants. And one of the other challenges within their department, too, is all their areas haul water. They have no hydrants in their area. So that's a big challenge for them as well. So that's Consolidated Fire Department. And after I read through the Little Mountain Rescue and Fire, we're going to have them come up front and get a picture, and if y'all would like to make some comments to them. Little Mountain Fire Department and Little Mountain Rescue, they're two separate organizations. However, they're both housed in the same building and work together as one during emergencies, fundraisers, and events. Little Mountain Fire and Rescue operates in the southeastern part of Newberry County, South Carolina, and run mutual aid with Lexington and Richland Counties. Most of their volunteers are members of both organizations. Established in 1960, Little Mountain Fire Department currently has 44 members with various levels of training, which include 32 volunteers having firefighter one certification, 26 having firefighter two certification, and 32 having emergency vehicle driving training, 25 volunteers have pump ops one, and 20 have pump ops two. Established in 1981, Little Mountain Rescue currently has 37 members who offer first responder services during medical and rescue emergencies. Of the 37 members, four volunteers are basic EMTs, two are advanced EMTs, and three are paramedics. Thirty-five of these volunteers also have auto extrication training. In 2024, the volunteers of Little Mountain Fire Department responded to 325 calls. Little Mountain Rescue answered 367 calls. In 2024, the members of both departments tallied over 1,400 man hours of training. As of May 29th, 2025, the members have run 121 fire calls and 108 rescue squads, calls. Little Mountain Fire Department currently operates two engines, a tanker, a brush truck, a service truck, a wildland trailer equipped with a UTV, and an air trailer. The brush truck, wildland trailer, and the air trailer were all occupied, all acquired by the station. Little Mountain Rescue Squad is equipped with an ambulance, a heavy rescue vehicle, a quick response vehicle, and a boat. Both the fire and rescue facilities house a traffic control truck that we use on Interstate Lot, a rescue UTV, and the county's rehabilitation trailer. Numerous grants have been written and successfully attained, along with effective fundraising events, to enhance the purchase of various lifesaving equipment aimed at better serving the community. In April of this year, Little Mountain Fire Department was designated as a fire-safe South Carolina community for 2024 and will be awarded on Friday, June 13th, 2025, at the South Carolina Fire Rescue Conference in Myrtle Beach. Being a fire-safe South Carolinamese, the Fire Department has achieved a designation through the Fire Safe South Carolina Program demonstrating its commitment to community risk reduction. This involves fire departments completing specific courses, training, community partners for in-home safety visits, and educating citizens on fire prevention. Also, in April of this year, Captain Nick Huffstettler was awarded the 2025 Volunteer of the Year First Responder Division by Dominion Energy. Little Mountain Fire and Rescue is highly engaged in the community. They provide support for local church events, school activities, athletic competitions, and town gatherings when they are not occupied with training or responding to emergency calls. Little Mountain Fire and Rescue is fortunate to have an auxiliary to assist with events and assist on scenes with rehab and providing meals. The auxiliary is comprised of volunteer spouses, family members, and other dedicated citizens within the community. We invite all residents of Little Mountain Community who are interested in volunteering or joining the auxiliary to visit the station and collect an application. The business meetings take place on the first weeks of each month at 6:30, and the training sessions are held on the third, Thursday of every month at 6:30. The volunteers take pride in serving Little Mountain Community as well as other communities in Newberry County. And I want to personally thank all these departments for everything they do within our community, and their community, and our county. They do an outstanding job. And at this time, I'd like to ask all of them to come up here tonight, and let's get a picture, and I would encourage y'all to make some comments, if you'd like, to each one of them. So y'all come up front.
Come on up front.
Come on up front.
Come on, buddy.
If I do it, sorry.
You're good, Andrew.
Okay, everyone look this way. Three, two. You're riding. One more time, three. Okay.
Again, I want to say thank you to each and every one of them, and I would encourage y'all, if y'all have anything you want to speak to them about, or at this time, thank you.
It's certainly good to have all of you here, and we're glad to have you, we appreciate you. I don't think people realize what it takes to be a volunteer fireman or rescue. The amount of time it takes to, to earn your qualifications, amount of time you're away from your family, to support your community. It's a, it's a dying breed, it looks like, but I commend every one of you. Thank you for what you do. You mean the world to me and my family, and I don't know what Newberry County would do without you. So, thank y'all.
I just wanted to thank Tommy. We talked about it several months before, we talked about it, and we finally got it together, and I think it was a long overdue, we finally got everybody together and recognized them and thanked them, and let the citizens know actually what we, resources we have. But we couldn't do it without you, thank you, appreciate you, we're behind you, whatever it takes. Thank y'all.
Your steak suppers are immaculate. Thank you, Mr. Wilber, for reminding me of that.
I always look forward to that.
Exactly.
I was looking around, there's a lot of old people out there.
There's a lot of old people. It's been seven hundred and some years. A couple of y'all make up seven hundred and some years together.
I've had the honor and the privilege to work with many of you, and that makes me old as well, I guess, so. But I travel the state, and most people are blown away in public safety when I tell them we still run the county on volunteer basis, but it's because of amazing people like you. And so I thank God for you. And so I thank God for you. I thank God for what you do for the county and I know we can't do everything, but we certainly want you to know that you're loved, you're prayed for, and you're supported and we'll do everything in our power to do what we can to show you that we're with you 100%. So thank God for each of you and thank God for the times we spent working together. It's a blessing to me.
Anyone else?
Just like to thank you guys, the time you spend, you have to make so many calls, do so much training, go to so many meetings just to get that little small tax break you get every year and all the money you spend on gas and stuff and the time you're away from your families. I mean, Newberry County and the citizens, thank you for all you do for us.
God bless you. God bless you and thank you for being here. Yep. All right. The next item is an ordinance number 05012025, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, and Newberry PV1 LLC, providing for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, providing special source revenue credits, and addressing other matters related there too. This is the third reading. You got anything to go along with that, Mr. Shaker?
No, sir, there's no change in the ordinance. And again, this is an existing filo and what this ordinance before council would do, would it simply authorize the amendment to the agreement, which would extend the investment period, but change no other terms in the existing agreement.
Very good. This being the third reading, uh, third reading, do I have a motion to be third reading? Motion by Councilman Smith, I'm second. Second by Vice Chairman Sees. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Fifth item on the agenda, ordinance number 05022025, an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026, the Newberry County budget for county ordinary purposes and for other county purposes for which the county may levy a tax and receive revenues to provide for the levy of taxes of all taxable personal and real property in Newberry County for all county purposes, including sufficient tax to pay the principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness of Newberry County payable during the fiscal year, to provide for matters relating to Newberry County, and to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues received by the county during said fiscal year, and to provide for borrowing in anticipation of tax collections by the issuance of one or more tax anticipation notes if necessary. This is the third reading. Do I have a motion to be third reading? Or excuse me, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir, other than, you know, the budget's unchanged from actually first reading to through second reading to third reading, like we discussed, it's a $94.7 million budget. You know, close to 51 million, 50.7 is associated with capital, our capital projects fund, the bulk of which are the CPST projects. And the increase associated with that is just a reflection that these grapes have ripened and are ready for harvest and we're at a point now where it's, as you can see, we're bidding projects and construction's beginning and, you know, construction involves financial activity and the bulk of the cost of those projects. There were some slight changes or increases to our special revenue funds and the biggest was the Public Works Grant Fund. Again, that's CTC money for paving projects. We just have a ambitious paving plan for next fiscal year and I think you're going to be pleased with the results there. And then the general fund budget is proposed, that's what most of us pay the most attention to, at 39.8 million. It's a one and a half percent decrease compared to the current fiscal year and there are no tax, fee, or service charge increases that are proposed. We're not adding additional staff. The employment level of the county will remain the same in terms of part-time and full-time positions and y'all have authorized a cost of living adjustment for county employees that equals the increase in the Consumer Price Index for the 12 months in calendar year 2024, which lines us up really well with other counties and government agencies in South Carolina.
And as we know, the budget is a living, breathing number that can be worked with during the year as needed, if need be. So I think it's a good budget going in.
I meant to go back and look, Jeff, the elected officials, did we put a proviso in there? We say we did, but I didn't go back and look that they would get whatever the cost of living for county employees was.
Yes, sir, that's a that's a section in the ordinance.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we got that put in there. I thought we did, but wanted to confirm.
We sure did.
That being said, do I have a motion to be third reading? Motion by?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Scurry. Any discussion?
I just commend the staff for the incredible job. All of us feel the pain every time we go to a grocery store, every time we buy something of the cost increases. So for us to be able to hold the line and not increase taxes in an economy like this and a budget like this yet to provide these services is just phenomenal. So my hats off to my fellow council members, hats off to our staff. I know it took a lot, but I think it's the right thing to do for our folks because they are feeling the pinch of this economy. So I'm thankful that we were able to do this.
I also, there's a couple of things I'd like to point out with our budget, one of which is, for those of you that are not aware, our fiscal year runs July 1 through June 30. There's a need to have, not a need, there's a requirement to have a budget in place by July 1 so that we are fiscally responsible for our expenses going forward. So there's a need in order to to have these approvals and readings to take place on a certain timeframe in order to to get that in place by July 1. However, as Councilman Johnson has alluded to and stated, this is a working document. If there's issues, concerns, any problems with the budget, you know, we, Administrator Shaker is graciously committed to try to address those concerns and if need be, we can certainly come back and amend that budget at a later date if there is an issue, something that we need to address. So, so anyway, it is a living document. It's not an end all be all after third reading. So anyway, but yes, thank you for your efforts in order to put this together. Thank you.
I don't have any comments. Thanks staff for working hard on it. Echo whatever one else has said, worked real hard with that and it's a work in progress.
All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, so item six, county council, take action during the 5:00 PM executive session. We did not take any action. Do we have any appointments tonight? Don't have any. No appointments. Public comments. All right, first up is Mr. Robbie Ed Hazel. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and where you live.
I'm walking without a walker.
I see you walking without a cane harness, right?
I have it back there, but I'm walking without it. Robbie Ed Hazel from Prosperity and Mr. Shaker and Councilman, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I do have one thing, well, several things, but one thing that's real important to me and I think to a lot of people is we would like before the budget, we know this one's approved, but we would like for y'all to consider next year's budget, that you have an opportunity for the citizens to come in and ask their questions and be able to get answers from you as a forum. And I had mentioned that like the first year when we had the Helene thing going on about we'd like to have a forum and was just wondering if y'all would consider that as a future option and if that would be something going.
Our work sessions are designed to be as such, if I'm correct.
But are we able to get answers during that? See, we didn't know.
During our work sessions.
Plus the public hearing is an opportunity to do that as well.
Okay, well, we did, I did not know that and because I was told one time when I got up here, which was during the county council time, that I couldn't get any answers.
Well, during the public hearing, we're not, probably a lot of answers, but during the work session is definitely the time to ask.
The work session time, we can, we can speak at that time. Okay, okay, well, that answers that. Also, I have a concern of a department that I'm going to give y'all envelopes before you leave, it's a copy of this particular employee's W2 and what she, you know, is making. I would like for y'all to look at that and when y'all have your next meeting and consider looking at this particular employee. I do not feel that she's, I think something's not right there. I feel like she is not, she doesn't, there's not an understanding of how her salary and her pay works. And and from what I remember, what I, from Labor Board, that you can't have a, I may be wrong, but this is what I was told, that you cannot have a part-time salaried employee. So I put everything in the envelopes for all of you. If y'all would take that and look at it and see what y'all can do about this, it really concerns me. Also, that particular department had grant money and I understand that the grant money came in and then there's, that money's been paid out of the budget money. So I listed all that in my stuff for y'all to look over, but because I don't understand how, what are we doing with the funds that were budgeted that's now being moved over to take care of the grant money? So what's the balance of those funds? Where is it going to go, whatever? So I put that in there too. And if y'all could just give me some.
We'll be glad to look over all that.
If you'll be glad to look over it and get some answers back.
Get that and we'll get back with you.
That's why I put it in there. So anyway, thank y'all. I appreciate it. I just, you know, those are some very big concerns of ours, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Robbie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Jerry Reno. I think I said it right. I hope I said it right. Okay.
Reno. I've been here before.
All right, just state your name and where you live, please.
Jerry Reno. We live on Galgan's Court in the Newberry County end of Lake Greenwood. We brought some of the people that live out there and I hope Mr. Shaker's aggressive paving may have what Mr. Scurry was going to talk to me about this evening and I hope it is that we're going to get our road paved. We've been trying, I've been trying, they've been trying for 22 years. And Mr. Shaker and Mr. Scurry came out and visited with us last year and Mr. Shaker said that not this year, but possibly next year, we'll come into some of the money in the fiscal 25 budget and I hope that's what's going to happen. I think we've waited long enough. We had one road out of our subdivision that was paved and all of them were supposed to have been taken in to be paved and something happened in the interim and so 20 years has gone by and we still haven't got it paved. I brought a lot of information. I've shared that information with Senator Cromer. I've tried to get the information out to other people. I don't know what else we can do. I know the 2007 ordinance is an issue, but I went to the Attorney General's Office of the state of South Carolina and according to them, we are exempt from that ordinance because we all purchased our property prior to the ordinance. We bought in 1997. We in fact was going to get it paved in 2006 by then county Public Works Director Tommy Whitehead. He was unfortunately fired and we didn't get it done, but they're saying that we're exempt from that ordinance. Now, I don't know all the legality of that. You guys have an attorney and I don't know that we should have to get an attorney to get our road paved. I was at the executive board meeting. I presented everything. I've got an encyclopedia stack of papers that I've been going through and I've talked to everybody I know to talk to, everybody on this, well, not Mr. Smith, you weren't there. I think the rest of them, Mr. Johnson wasn't there, but at the executive board, I talked with y'all. I don't know what we can do to get it paved. I mean, we're willing to do whatever it takes to get it paved and I don't know what that.
We spoke with about getting CTC to look into?
So we're looking into it. Is there some possibility in the near future, hopefully?
Yeah, I think what we could do is follow up with you and talk about, we're formulating the plan, so really what the budget was focused on was the total funding of paving and what the size of our request would be to the CTC based on the availability of money. So I'll tell you what I'll do, I can talk with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll set up another meeting and.
Yeah, whatever you'd like to do.
Director.
I'm willing to talk as much as you want to talk, as long as it's got paving in there.
At the end of it, right, yeah.
All right, that's a.
That's all I have.
Give it to Mr. Shaker and we'll see what we can do.
Okay, that's great. That sounds like encouragement. I don't know if any of my other people want to talk. I'm usually the one that has to come up.
Got you, got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reno.
All right. Comments from the county administrator?
Yes, sir. I just, a few things I wanted to mention to you. I guess the first is a little CPST update, the capital project sales tax. You know, we're in the midst now of these projects being rolled out and I think I had mentioned to y'all from a workflow standpoint that we wanted to, you know, not all have all the projects hit at one time. So there was some strategy behind, you know, the, making sure the workload was steady. And so what you'll see, not at the June 18th meeting, but at the July 2nd meeting, is a recommendation of award to you for bids on the Little Mountain Reunion Park improvements. The bid opening will be on the 18th. Y'all have a meeting on the 18th, so we won't be in position to have y'all act on that then, so that would be July 2nd. And then the, the second project is half of the museum scope of work and that half is HVAC. And so we will have a bid opening, I believe, on the 26th of this month and we should be in position to have a recommendation of award for y'all on July 2nd. The other half of that project is the roof. It has been assessed and we have the architect designing the solution because again, we're trying to eliminate pulling water from outside the building to internal gutters through the building and then send it back out the building. That can be a problem, so especially when the pipes are over 100 years old. So, so that is taking shape. One thing I wanted to mention to you too, you know, there was, you know, some things changed at the federal level related to federal funding and we had a couple of things get paused and then those frozen funding sources, some of them thawed out and we just had another one that thawed for us. You know, the Safe Streets For All Grant request, this was to develop a plan for improvements to the county road system. That had been frozen, that has thawed now. And so we received notification earlier this week that not only that we received funding, but we can move forward. And so the idea behind that is that this plan would identify improvements to the system and do some preliminary engineering on those and then we would go after additional grants to implement the priority projects identified in the plan. So we're excited about getting that going.
Sounds great.
Yes, sir.
Great, very promising. Comments from council?
Councilman Fulmer. Yeah, I certainly welcome Station 5, Station 6, as well as the EMS tonight. Long overdue recognition of our volunteer service, huge benefit financially and personnel wise that the county gets from the volunteer service. So thank y'all for coming. Thank you for being here. Thank you for everything that you do. Just a general pleasure in order to serve, so other than that, I have nothing else.
Councilman Johnson? Thank God for all of you. Godspeed to each of you. Excellent. Councilman Smith?
Thank you again, Tommy, for us putting it together. I know we talked about it a long time. We finally got it for recognition. It's been long overdue and echo what everyone else has said too, but look forward to it. I had the honor of 35-year career of being able to work with each and every station in the county and I know what it takes in and. in the county, and I know what it takes in and out, day in day, to make it happen, and the citizens to be able to see and hear what actually goes into it and make it work. But thank you, I thank everybody for coming out tonight, for participating in your government, and we can help you, let us know. Thank you.
Honorable Councilman Scurry?
I want to thank all of our volunteers for being out tonight, you know, for being supportive to us. Mr. Reno, you're on your side. We hope we got things started in the right direction. Thank you so much.
Pleased to be here.
Thanks for everybody coming out, participating in government. Thanks to our volunteers for the great work they do for the county and the service they do for the citizens of Newberry County. Long overdue. And also appreciate our public speakers that got up, made comments, addressed issues, and bring it to our attention so that we can try to look into it and try to fix some of the problems. And thanks for staff doing a great job with the budget, and you made it easy on us this year, so appreciate it. And all the other, our fellow council, my fellow council members for working together this year, doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo all of that. God bless our volunteers. Y'all are the backbone of our county, and we couldn't do it without you. Long overdue appreciation, we do appreciate you. God look out to every one of you. Thank y'all for speaking, Mr. Robbie Ed, Mr. Reno. We hear you. And remember, the budget is a working, living, breathing thing. It can be altered. Streets can get paved. We can, we can get it all accomplished together, so we'll do what we can. Thank y'all all for coming. With that, do I have a, oh, I can't adjourn yet. I'm the gun.
I was trying.
I was trying, I was trying hard. Future meetings. Newberry County Economic Development Committee, June 9th at 5:00 PM.
We're going, that's going to be moved?
That's going to be moved to the 23rd. Correct. Change on that, Newberry Economic Development Committee is going to meet June 23rd at 5:00 PM, not the 9th. Newberry County Council Work Session, June 18th at 5:00 PM. Newberry County Council, June 18th at 6:00 PM. Newberry County Finance Committee, June 23rd at 5:00 PM. Going to be canceled.
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Motion by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Scurry quickly. Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned.